Before I get started, I'd like to read a email I received from Councilman Amerigi to read into the record. Statement for September 5th meeting. Hello all, as you know, I've been dealing with some periodic health issues since April, as they have rared up again over the long weekend. As such, I won't be able to make it tonight, but I was hoping to have another statement read in regard to another issue, so I'll get to that. Item number one, acceptance of meeting minutes. Discussion and possible vote with regard to the acceptance of minute, meeting minutes from the meetings of August 1st and August 16th, 2017, to be accepted and approved by the town council, to have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been moved, made by Councilman DiLorenzo, seconded by Councilman Brady. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number two, executive session. At the request of Mayor Lombardi, a motion is in order to convene into executive session pursuant to RIGL Sections 42-46-4 and 42-46-5A to anticipate a litigation regarding the matter of Rosemary DiMarco, Kimberly DiMarco, and Heather Ardentey versus the town of North Providence. To have a motion to convene in an executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made by Councilman Brady, seconded by Councilman Fiola. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
... Just state your name for the record.
I'm Dean Almbakary.
Okay. Mr. Bakary's here to obtain a liquor, a BV, BV liquor license. You all have your information in front of you, is there any questions?
I just have one question, Mr. President. Mr. Bakary, I just wanted to ask what your hours will be for your business? The hours you'll be operating?
The hours, uh, well, it's important to understand about this concept, it's actually, well first, it's a retail store, and we have a coffee, but we're gonna be, it's more of a coffee-heavy concept. It's gonna be open from 6:30 in the morning until, well, 6:30, 7:30, we're still debating on that, and it's gonna be open until midnight. This is more of a coffee concept, and it's a liquor concept, but we wanted to infuse some offerings of beer, wine, and some cordials going on.
Thank you.
Mr. Bakary, you, uh, you have a kitchen?
Yes.
And a cook, you're gonna have a menu?
Yes. It's already built out as well. It's already, we already have a kitchen, kitchen built out and ready to go.
Any questions, Mr. Bakary? Alright, one second. Okay, is there anybody here for or against this liquor license? Okay. Just state your name for the record, please.
My name is Joseph Faischfano. Um, the, uh, the building that's, that, that's, this gentleman occupies right now is owned by my father, Joseph Faischfano. And I am, I'm opposed to a BV liquor license. I understand there's some type of coffee concept, but, as I understand it, once you approve a BV license to that establishment, they could turn it into anything, they could turn it into a nightclub, they could be up till 1 o'clock in the morning. That area has always had problems, I believe it was maybe Sky Bar years ago, if I'm correct. Uh, we had a lot of problems with the neighbors. When we first purchased that property, um, and I, and I have to tell you, I just learned about this recently because I was notified because of the property I own across the street, that when, when, this property was first leased, um, to this gentleman, it was for a vapor cigarette store. I have a copy of the lease, I, I reviewed the lease from my father, my father put this lease together. And now, we hear about a liquor license. We spent a lot of money on this building, spent a lot of money to clean it up, and I don't feel as though this is what we need or the town needs in this location. Now, I think I heard him saying, I could be wrong, that there is a kitchen. Now, you built a kitchen in there?
There's, there's equipment that's in it, it's really good stuff.
Yeah, you brought it in? What, what, do you have an answer system? Do you have a hood?
Sir, you have to direct the questions to me.
Alright, I, I'm just asking, so I, so I can understand that part, part of the, I guess there's two parts. He does not have approval by lease to have a liquor license at that location. That, that would pretty much make it the easiest way. But secondly, there is no formal kitchen that, that would be with a hood system, an answer system, uh, I don't believe there's any gas in that location for a grill, griddle. I mean, you might be able to run an oven that you plug in, a small microwave, but this is not set up as a kitchen, this is a vape, vape, vapor store that, and, and again, I'm not trying to stop you from making any money, I'm not trying to stop anybody from making any money, but this is not what this premises was leased to this gentleman for. And, and I, I don't know how the approval process works in here now, but I, I believe that if you do approve it, he has to satisfy a number of requirements, such as, he needs a valid lease, approval from the landlord to do such, and if he does have a kitchen, what kind of kitchen, what, what is it required? Could he have a small toaster, could he have a microwave?
How, I will have to talk to that, I don't know exactly what it is.
So, I, I, I'm, so you own the property?
My father owns the property, I don't own the property, I own the property directly across the street.
So you're not here as the owner of the building in opposition, you're here as the property owner across the street in opposition to the building? So, you gotta admit, it's a, for us, it's, it's a little confusing.
Well, the thing is, Mrs. DeSefanis, is that I just learned about this, I understood, I leased the property across the street to Horizon for my father, and I handled some of his properties, some deals he puts together, he put a deal together with this gentleman. I reviewed the lease, I have a copy of the lease. The lease does not state that there can be, it wasn't, it was not for a, any type of liquor establishment.
But does it prohibit him from doing that? I mean, not to get into anyone's business, but...
Well, yes, in a lease, in, your lease will prohibit, you, you, you state in the lease what type of business that you would, you're gonna be leasing the premises for. If I, if I leased Dunkin' Donuts, they can't just come in and put a strip club in tomorrow night. You know what I mean, they, they, you know, if they do, then they're in violation of the lease. And, and, and again, you know, right from the start, this was unbeknownst to me, I don't know if my father was aware of it, I was away, I got the letter, um, I came in, and, and, and I'm here, but, based on what I have and a copy of his lease that I am in possession of, he does not have the authorization from the owner to put this in.
Okay, um, I was just speaking with my legal counsel. Mr. Bakary, I'm familiar with your businesses, I think you are an excellent businessman, I think you're doing a good job. And I know you own a lot of businesses in the town, that you do a good job as well. I don't think this council is at will right now to get in the middle of a landlord... I don't think this counsel is at will right now to get in the middle of a landlord tenant dispute. We also don't have the ability to see the lease, so we don't, before we make this decision, we don't know what's in the lease. Um, that's why I'd feel comfortable deferring this out. Um, we could call a special meeting in a couple of weeks, we could put it on next month's agenda, but I think this counsel needs to at least be privy to that lease before we make a decision. Um, so I'd like to entertain a motion to defer this to the next counsel.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy, seconded by Councilman Field, are there any further questions? There be a none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. You have to stay up here for a second. Item number six, vicu- victualling license. Town council consideration and possible vote on an application for a victualling license filed by White Horse Vapor Stores LLC, D B A White Horse Vapor, fourteen eighty-three Mineral Spring Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island. Does anybody have any questions on the victualling license? There be a none who have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman DeStefanis, seconded by Councilman DiLorenzo, any questions? There be a none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Can you get us a copy of that lease to the clerk's office?
Sure, the landlord's well aware that I'm here tonight. Sorry, Dino, the, uh, my landlord is well aware that I'm, I'm here tonight. There's act, you know, there's, there's a process in order to get to this point. My landlord's been well aware that I've been involved in this process. I, I mean, this is like, I feel like it's a hoax, I mean, I don't even understand what just happened, but I will be more than happy and, uh, I can't wait to expedite.
No, we understand, and, and we, we, the last thing this counsel wants to do is prohibit business from expanding in the town, we just can't get in the middle of, you know.
You could understand something too, that you need a, you need a kitchen in there.
Well, when you...
You, you, you told me you had a kitchen, but you really didn't have a kitchen.
This gentleman, what he just stated is completely false, we have a, the same exact concept in downtown Providence. For the last year and a half, we've never had an issue, it's a retail, it's a retail store, and it's a, a cocktail bar, and we serve, um, we serve paninis and, um, uh, paninis and some oysters, I mean, and there's, you don't need a hood system, um, you don't...
No, but you could have a kitchen, not...
Of course, absolutely, we have, you have to have the ability to, in order to warm up food, and we have that ability. With a panini press, and, I think you build great American sandwiches, and, uh, do wonderful toasts, so what he said is absolut, I mean, as most of you probably know, that's not the, that's not the way the law's written, so, um, yeah.
All right, well, let, we'll move forward as soon as we can, take a look at that lease, and, and we'll figure it out from there.
Okay.
All right?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Item number seven, liquor license, notice was given of a public herring to be held this date in the Providence Journal on August eighteenth and twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, for a transfer of a B V liquor license from Okie's Japanese Steakhouse Incorporated, D B A Okie Steakhouse, twelve seventy Mineral Spring Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island, to Juliette Arias, D B A Graded Mix, twelve seventy Mineral Spring Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island. Is there anyone here from Okie's and Graded Mix?
Good evening.
Just state your name for the record, all three of you, please.
I'm Louis Rivera, this is my fiancee Juliette Arias,
and this is Michael Esposito.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on this transfer? You all have the paperwork in front of you, which you've reviewed, so if there being questions, would anybody like to speak in favor or against this license? Transfer? Would anybody like to speak in favor or against this transfer? Would anybody like to speak in favor or against this transfer? There be a none who have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Brady, seconded by Councilman DeStefanis, any questions? There be a none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number eight, victualling license, town council consideration and possible vote on an application for a victualling license. You gotta stay up here. Filed by Juliette Arias, D B A Graded Mix, twelve seventy Mineral Spring Avenue, North Providence. Does anybody have any questions?
I do, Mr. President, just one question, uh, can you please tell us what the hours of operation and the days are that you'll be open for business, please?
We're gonna be open seven days a week, it's gonna be from Sunday through Wednesday, one to nine o'clock, and then during the weekend, it's gonna be till one in the morning.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Explain to me Graded Mix, what does it mean?
Graded Mix is a Columbia South cuisine type of, uh, dining. My, uh, fiancee here, she's from Columbia, her mother was a cook in Columbia, and unfortunately, she passed, and when she passed, she ended up inheriting her cookbook. So, every, most of the recipes she does is through a grated, like grated steak, chicken, so that's how she got the name Graded.
Nice variety, I read the menu that you sent, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Uh, a motion to approve the victualling license?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Brady, seconded by Councilman DeStefanis. There be no questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Uh, item number nine, stay up here. Entertainment license, town council to consider approval of an entertainment license for Juliette Arias, D B A Graded Mix, twelve seventy Mineral Spring Avenue, North Providence. Any questions on the entertainment license? Any questions on the entertainment license? Okay, there be a none. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Brady, seconded by Councilman DeStefanis. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, good luck.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Best of luck. Good luck.
Proposed ordinances. Notice was given of a public herring on this day whereby the town council would consider passage of the following proposed ordinance. Item number ten, ordinance seventeen dash zero-zero-eight, an ordinance amending chapter thirty-one, twenty-four of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of North Providence entitled, Abandonment of Highways, Driftways Procedure. Entertain a motion to defer?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy, seconded by Councilman Brady, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number eleven, Terrance Street abandonment petition, town council to consider the approval of a petition to abandon a portion of Terrance Street submitted by Douglas Avenue Associates Incorporated and U S Development Two LLC, the petition was advertised on August eleventh, August eighteenth, and August twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, for a herring on this date. Is there anyone here from Douglas Avenue Associates? Just state your name for the record, sir.
Hi, uh, it's Tom Moses, I'm a lawyer for Douglas Avenue Associates, and, um, we want to thank you for having this hearing, we've gotten your proposal of what the fee would be, we have no objection to the fee, and, uh, we're prepared to move forward as soon as possible.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Moses? Okay, is there here any, is there anyone here to talk in favor or against the abandonment? Is there anyone here to talk in favor or against of the aban- abandonment? Okay. It appears that this, uh, there is no public use for this street, uh, so therefore I'd like to entertain a motion to abandon Terrance, this portion of Terrance Street.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman DeStefanis, I mean, Councilman Brady, seconded by Councilman DeStefanis, any further questions? There be a none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, thank you. Item number twelve, Clinton Street abandonment petition, town council to consider the approval of a petition to abandon a portion of Clinton Street submitted by the Town of North Providence. The petition was advertised on August eighteenth, twenty-fifth, and September first, two thousand seventeen, for a herring on this date. Okay, we have to rescind the last mo- motion on number eleven, so I, do I have a motion to rescind, rescind number eleven?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Brady, seconded by Councilman Juicy, and advertises for a herring, or, contin- and continue this to next month.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Brady, seconded by Councilman DeStefanis, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, okay. Sorry about that. Item number twelve, Clinton Street abandonment petition, town council to consider the approval of a petition to abandon a portion of Clinton Street submitted by the Town of North Providence, the petition was advertised on August eighteenth, twenty-fifth, September first, two thousand seventeen, for a herring on this date.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council, hello again, Kelly Morris for the town. Um, this is also a, a request to abandon a portion of Clinton Street. This relates to the public safety building, uh, proposal, um, that we discussed earlier tonight. Uh, we are here at the first public hearing, and if you have any questions, clearly, we believe that the, um, the land has ceased to be useful to the public. Uh, we're gonna be using it as part of the project, um, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Does anybody have any questions for Attorney Morris? Is there anyone here to speak in favor or against this abandonment? Is there anyone here to speak in favor or against this abandonment? Is there anyone here to speak in favor or against this abandonment? Okay, no questions? Okay, I'm, I'd like to entertain a motion to continue to next month for a public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy, uh, it's Councilman Brady, seconded by Councilman Juicy. Any questions? There be a none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number thirteen, Zone Change Amendment Request, town council to consider the approval of an application from the Town of North Providence to amend the zoning ordinance of the Town of North Providence to change lots one ninety-four, two thirty-six, and three thirty-six on Assessor's Platte twenty-two A from commercial professional, C P, to a district in order as institutional, I S.
Thank you, Mr. President, again for the record, my name is Kelly Morris, I'm here on behalf of the town. Um, earlier this evening, uh, you amended the comprehensive plan, uh, to change the future land use map to, uh, institutional for this area. Um, we are now here to ask you to change the zoning for three of the lots in the front. One, two, three. The rest of the lots were changed at a prior meeting. Um, I do have the architects here tonight, John Racine and Ronald Ashton, both of R G B. I also have Dave Westcott here, I'd like Mr. Westcott to testify on the consistency with the comprehensive plan because that is the finding that you need to make tonight. The planning board has recommended approval, they have made a finding that this zone change is consistent with the comprehensive plan. What I'm, uh, going to ask Mr. Westcott to do tonight is along with the future land use map change that you just made earlier tonight, he's going to mention a couple of other sections of the comprehensive plan that makes this zone change consistent.
Thank you. Just state your name for the record, Mr. Westcott?
My name is David Westcott, honest to tell the truth, et cetera, I'm the town planner in North Providence. The Planning Board is the body that's empowered to determine what is and isn't consistent with the comprehensive plan, and the, uh, Planning Board made a determination that doing this is consistent. Now, you've, you found the hammer, let's sharpen the saw, the next step is to make the zoning changes, and we would've had you do it all on us, but we didn't own the three parcels in front, they belonged to Tina's and to the K F C. So now we have to come back and do it as a separate action, I apologize for that, but sometimes when you find the saw, it's the wrong saw, you gotta get the other saw. Um, the Planning Board decided this is consistent with the comprehensive plan because I mentioned earlier, the goal says we want our fire departments to have, and our police departments to have the very best, the best training, the best facilities, the most up-to-date equipment. Um, the comprehensive plan talks specifically about this parcel, and you all know the history of the zoning on this parcel. This parcel had a problem with zoning, um, that, uh, that the comprehensive plan said needed to resolve and be resolved, and it needed to be resolved in the courts, and then it needed to be resolved by the council. The Planning Board thinks this is a great way to resolve it, let's finish the zoning of these parcels, put them all into the I, uh, I S category, and in fact, we approved an amendment to the comp plan. Remember how we had to come here and then we had to go away and come back to get the comp plan approved? Did we gave you a little addition to it? That addition to it says, this is what we're gonna do, so let's do it tonight, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Westcott. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Westcott before he sits down?
Mr. President, all, the only other thing I would say is we did include a copy of the master plan, the actual plan that's been approved by the Planning Board. I have the architects here, if you'd like them to give a brief overview of the master plan. Um, it's essentially the building, it shows the parking, um, and the Planning Board will be reviewing this again for the, what I call the heavy engineering, um, next month? Mr. Westcott, next month?
Uh, yes, but next Wednesday is the community board's...
So they will go through all the, all the ver, the detailed engineering on drainage, and parking, and circulation, and landscaping, so that will be done next week, if you, if you approve of this zone change.
Does anybody have any questions for the architect or firm?
I have one question, it could be for the administration as well, when do we foresee an actual shovel going into the ground?
So does the chairman, members of the council?
I'm gonna respectfully request that you allow Mr. Racine to address the neighbor's, uh, question, um...
Excuse me.
So, Racine, it's really known. It's, 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 it's seen, I don't know if it's really seen, do you mean really know? So, three forty-one, three forty-two? Yeah, let's take a look. Yeah, yeah, it's to the side. Three forty-one, four forty-two. I don't know what door.
So, that's the account, so, right, that many, it's...
Alcidos or whatever it is. Yeah, that's like Tina's, uh, business, so...
So the question... Just state your name for the record, sir?
Yeah, John.
My name is John Racine, I'm with R G B.
Councilman Field had a question about, uh...
It's, uh, John Racine, with R G B.
Basically, if everything goes as well as planned, when will we see a shovel in the ground?
Um, we plan on, uh, developing this site in a couple of different phases, but the first phase, we'd hope to have, uh, site work, site activity in at least in the next month or so. If everything gets, you know, if all the approvals are there and the planning, uh, goes forward.
Can you just repeat that, I'm sorry, some of the councilmembers don't hear, they can't hear you.
Oh, okay. Um, uh, we plan on developing the site in, in a couple of different phases, uh, we're gonna focus on the site work itself, you know, uh, grubbing and, and taking the material off the site, and if all the approvals, um, go as planned, um, we hope to start in the next month or so.
You don't have a shovel in the ground in another month?
Yeah, again, it'll be a series of, of phases, but, um, it'll be activity on the site within a month or so, if, if everything works out the way we have planned.
Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President, I did want to ask when your expected date of completion is for the project?
Yeah, John.
As part of the construction phase, there will be a traffic control plan, things of that nature. So as, you know, we anticipate school activities going on, we'll work with the contractor and make sure that the traffic during that time is controlled. So, yeah, that's something that we've definitely taken consideration and worked with the town and the school to minimize the impact.
Okay. Thank you. Any more questions? Okay, there being none, is there anyone here to speak in favor or against this zone change? Is there anyone here to speak in favor or against this zone change? Is there anyone here to speak in favor or against this zone change? Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the application to amend the zoning ordinance and map for Plot, Platt Twenty-Two-A, Lots One-Ninety-Four, Three-Thirty-Six, and Two-Thirty-Six, from Commercial Professional CP to Institutional IS.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilman Fiola. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. And I'd like to entertain a motion to have the town clerk place the draft ordinance on the October agenda for passage.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilman Fiola. Any further questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number fourteen, Firearms License. Town Council to Consider Approval of a Firearms License. Catalog Sales Only. Just going to wait till... For Scott Lane, DBA, the firing lane, Two-Thirty-Eight Lexington Avenue, North Providence. Just please state your name for the record, sir?
Scott Lane.
Okay. You all have the information in front of you. Is there any questions for Mr. Lane?
Council President.
Councilman?
Sir, are you going to have any inventory? Excuse me? Are you going to have any inventory?
No, absolutely none.
No inventory?
None. It's going to go right from the wholesaler to the customer, which would be another FFL dealer anywhere across the US.
Thank you.
Councilman?
That was my question. Same question.
Any further questions? Okay, there being none, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman DeStefanis, seconded by Councilman Justy. Any further questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. And I'd like to entertain a motion to have the town clerk place the draft ordinance on the October agenda for passage.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilman Fiola. Any further questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number fourteen, Firearms License. Town Council to Consider Approval of a Firearms License. Catalog Sales Only. Just going to wait till... For Scott Lane, DBA, the firing lane, Two-Thirty-Eight Lexington Avenue, North Providence. Just please state your name for the record, sir?
Scott Lane.
Okay. You all have the information in front of you. Is there any questions for Mr. Lane?
Council President.
Councilman?
Sir, are you going to have any inventory? Excuse me? Are you going to have any inventory?
No, absolutely none.
No inventory?
None. It's going to go right from the wholesaler to the customer, which would be another FFL dealer anywhere across the US.
Thank you.
Councilman?
That was my question. Same question.
Any further questions? Okay, there being none, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman DeStefanis, seconded by Councilman Justy. Any further questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Chief, did you want to add?
Mr. President, members of the council, just incumbent me to inquire about this. I appreciate the fact that there's no inventory there, but are you required to have an FFL license to do this?
Yes.
And do you currently have one?
This is the last step to get, and I've been approving through the ATM, and this is the last step.
So my recommendation would be approve it upon his receiving the FF, Federal Firearms License, would be my recommendation.
Do we have any federal firearms license? I didn't receive that. No, that's the ATM, you need to the town clerk, and they'll issue it to me once I have this permit.
You also spoke to Assistant Chief Dave Swab. Yes, because I sent it to you guys, and he, I know he spoke to him.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So is there a comment? You want to ask the chief? How's that word, chief? It sounds like it's one or the other. He's saying that he needs the approval from us in order to get what you're asking for, which is...
Yeah, admittedly, I didn't realize that this was on the agenda this evening. I would've done a little more research, but I'm not an expert on this, however...
A lot of difference with the chief, maybe you want to defer?
Yeah. Okay, I'm going to have a, can I entertain a motion to, I'm going to hold off approving this tonight. I will call a special meeting for you because we weren't prepared to answer this question. I'm glad, I'm, thank you, chief, for being here, by the way. And as soon as we can get that answer, we'll have the clerk contact you to come back out.
So moved.
Okay. Do I have a motion to defer this?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman DiLorenzo, seconded by Councilwoman Brady. May, did you want to?
Just one last thing with the chairman, um, mostly in terms of... I had that gathered. Yes.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. We'll be in touch. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Item number fifteen, Block Party. Town Council to Consider the Approval and Permission for William Francis and residents of Leah Street to have a neighborhood block party and block off the street on October twenty-eighth, two thousand seventeen, from twelve PM to nine PM. Is Mr. Francis here? Just state your name for the record, sir?
My name is William Francis.
Okay, does anybody have, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Francis? Councilman?
Did you get approval of everybody on the street?
I actually was able to get most of the street. I was not able to see two of the neighbors on the street. I obtained a signature from people on High Service Ave as well that would be affected by that because their driveway is on Leah Street. I was missing out on two houses on Leah Street. I was not able to acquire their signature.
Is it because you had them in a... I took them or they refused?
Correct. I've lived at this address now for about four years, and one of the houses, I've actually spoken to once in the four years. I really don't know them too well. They don't really venture out where I'm at. And the other one is on the corner of Belvedere and Leah Street. Their driveway is also affected, but I did not get a chance to get their signature as well.
So do you have that with you?
I do. Do you mind if I bring it up?
Sir, what is your address on Leah Street?
My address is eleven Leah.
Eleven. Okay. Councilman, did you have a question?
I just wanted to ask one quick question. I think it's a great idea for the community to come together. These block parties are always very successful and a lot of fun. But I did want to ask, did you leaflet the people, send a flyer, leave a flyer in their mail, in their door, informing them about it with the date?
The two people?
The two people you couldn't get?
No, I did plan on still trying to reach out to them, though, including, you know, anyone else I think that would be affected by the closure. Like I said, I know there's one more house, their driveway is on Leah, but their address is Belvedere.
Right, just if we approve you for this, then they would have a heads up that this is going to take place?
Understood.
If you can't reach them when they're in the home or by phone.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions?
I have one. Is this, is this for like Halloween? Is that what the...
Correct, yes. We throw a Halloween party every year. This is actually our tenth year doing so, so we decided to kind of go all out, and we were talking to a couple of the neighbors. My son's nine, and he plays with a lot of kids on that street, and, you know, we discussed it with the neighbors, and they all kind of were all for it. So we decided to go with it and see how far we could go and hope for the best.
Okay. Usually when we approve block parties, you, we obviously need the police permission to close down the street, so have you reached out to the police department?
Unfortunately, not. I was advised to do so, but due to time restrictions and honestly forgetting to as well, I had not had a chance to reach out to North Providence Police or Fire. I did plan on doing that as soon as I could. I know that may have affected tonight, but I also ran out of time before tonight, so I was hoping to at least be heard, and if I had to do that, I would, but I did plan on reaching out to both.
So, if you get that approval, odds are we'll be okay with it, but we can't approve that tonight without those approvals.
I see.
So, I'm going to make a motion to defer this to the October meeting, so we do have some time, obviously.
I appreciate that.
And we'll hear it that night for you.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilman DiLorenzo. Any questions?
So just to confirm, I would just need the police and fire both?
Police and fire, because in case of an ambulance has to go down that street, and obviously, police for emergency purposes, they need to be aware that that street would be closed.
Understood.
I think you should do what Councilwoman Brady said, put a couple of flyers in their doors for those two houses you can.
I'm going to try to personally reach out to them as well. I feel that'd be a better touch instead of just leaving a paper on the door, but if I can't, I will do that.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
See you next month. Private Detective License. Town Council to Consider Approval of a Renewal of a Private Detective License from Michael Caswell of Forty-Six Sherwood Avenue, North Providence. Please just state your name for the record.
Michael Caswell.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Caswell?
I have a question.
Councilman?
Are you bonded?
I am.
Okay. That's all I need to know.
I have one question. The license is issued with my home address on it. Is there any way I can have it issued with like a P.O. box versus just for privacy or purposes? I'm sorry?
We would feel comfortable if you kept it at the home address.
Okay.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilman DeStefanis. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Thank you. Item number eighteen, No Through Trucking. Councilman Justy requests discussion and possible vote on no-through trucking on East Avenue. Councilman?
Yeah, I've gotten complaints about trucks going from Middle Spring Avenue, Down Brown Avenue, make that little turn on Angel, and then out East Avenue. And then I get, I got complaints the other way, going the other way, from Smith Street, down East Avenue, Angel, and then out Brown to Middle Spring. And right there is the school, and there are no sidewalks there, so they feel that they want to prevent the trucks from coming through there. So I'm asking that we put in some legislation and make an ordinance to prevent trucking through those streets, through that street, East Avenue.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Justy to refer this matter to the ordinance committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. I have to go back to number seventeen. I skipped that.
I'm going to ask that that be dropped.
All right. Prorating Homestead Exemptions. Councilman Justy requests discussion and possible vote on an amendment to allow prorating the homestead exemption. State passed and able in legislation. Councilman?
I ask that it be dropped.
Councilman Justy's made a motion to remove this from the agenda. Pass it. Pass it off the agenda, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Item number nineteen, Roading Control and Trash Containers. Councilman DiLorenzo requests discussion and possible vote regarding roading control and trash containers. Councilman?
Okay, thank you, Council President. We have a problem in, especially in my neighborhood, as you can see, everyone is here. I want you to know that the administration has been working. I hear a lot of, nobody seems to care, but they do, you know, as far as the trash containers are concerned. You know, they're looking into it as far as the cost is concerned. They are looking into it, so I have to say that before I go any further. I also believe that the health and welfare and the safety of the community is important. I wish I could tell you I knew where they were coming from and what's going on, but I'm having the same problem, believe it or not. It's not, it's not fun, and it's tough living like that, it really is. So, having said that, I have somewhat of a plan. What I'd like to do is, is to make a motion to the town council, to Mr. President, that we send a letter to the administration to see if we can hire a part-time person, someone who can go around, for instance, in our area, it's monkey, to go around if there's, if there's bags on the sidewalks, then maybe we can start initiating a fine, just a beginning, a start, to make this all better for us. If it's a possibility, I'd like to make a motion to do that, Council President.
Okay, Councilman DiLorenzo's made a motion, seconded by Councilman DeStefanis. Is there any questions?
You know, along with having someone part-time, someone to do the dumpsters, the businesses' dumpsters, the condo dumpsters, you know, they're all part of it. We've had a, you know, I met with Chief Fossa, we've had a problem at a couple of different places. Mike Cannavale's doing a great job trying to get to everyone, so everyone's working on it, but we need more help. We definitely need more help. Trash containers, to me, are the key for it, so we're working on it. Okay. Let's see.
Okay, Councilman DiLorenzo's made a second motion to...
To, I just want to refer you to, I want to have some residential shit, dumpsters? Dumpsters in the condos and in businesses, in the same, yes.
In condominiums and businesses. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You can come up.
I've got more.
You know, I'm gonna let him finish his...
No, it's okay, I've got more, got a couple. I would also like to send a letter to the Ordinance Committee, asking to make it a fine if trash bags are on the sidewalk and not in the container, so I'd like to make a motion to do that. To send that to the Ordinance Committee.
Okay, motion's been made to put a fine in place for people leaving their trash bags on the sidewalk by Councilman DiLorenzo, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman DeStefanis, and to send this to the Ordinance Committee.
One more. I'd like to send, I'd like to make a motion to send a letter to Rhode Island College.
Let me take a vote on the first motion.
Go ahead, sorry.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Guys have it.
Okay, lastly, I'd like to send a letter to Rhode Island College. All the reports that I have gotten from several people in our area and Rick itself, it is infested with rodents. So I'd like to make a motion that we send a letter to the President, Mr. Sanchez, at Rhode Island College.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman DiLorenzo to send a letter to Rhode Island College addressing the rodent issue, seconded by Councilwoman Brady, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Guys have it, and I see there are some residents here that would like to speak?
I'm gonna make a motion that the first two motions you made be sent to the Ordinance Committee.
Okay.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Juicy, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Brady, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Guys have it.
My name is Linda Loxley, I live on Oregon Avenue, I spoke with Mr. Foster and two of my council representatives about two weeks ago on August twenty-second in Mr. Foster's office. We discussed an issue that is ongoing in the area of our home, Stephen lives on the same street. According to Mr. Foster, the only area in North Providence that does not have a rodent issue is Lee's Farm. Every part of North Providence has a rodent issue, and it's been swept under the carpet for too long. The residents deserve better. They're tired of being ignored by the town and the Town Council, they need some proaction. I lived in the thirteenth ward of Providence near the Cranston Street Armory, when the armory was being repaired, we were infested, and then the town, City of Providence, got those special trash cans, and that eliminated a lot of the problems. We need those trash cans, because people are just tossing the trash, like Stephen said, all over the place, people don't take care of their properties, and we've had two sightings recently, thank you Stephen, because the neighbor behind me is removing his debris that's causing the problem at my yard. I just had to pay five hundred and seventy-five dollars to the big blue bug to have rodent treatment because they were nesting underneath my cement stairs. My yard is in A1 shape, I've sent you all pictures of my yard and the four-inch hole that they're burrowing underneath my cement stairs. As a taxpayer, we deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak in the public?
Good evening, Council. My name is Julie Hillman, I live on Sheffield Ave. Just to state that, in the nineteen years that my husband and I have lived in our home, the twenty-five years that his family has lived on the street, we've never had an issue with rodents, or any wildlife for that matter. For the most part, everyone's trash is contained, or folks have left them in their garages until trash day. The last, I'd say maybe about a month and a half, roughly around the time that construction started, down at Rhode Island College, is when we started having rodent sightings, not just during the evening, but during the daytime, which to me, kind of concerns me that rodents are nocturnal animals, so being out in the daytime worries me about any sort of rabies or other diseases. I hear them climbing through the trees and the plants in my backyard, in my garden. I've never heard any other animals at night, raccoons, even people's cats, for the most part, there is not a lot of activity in our yards in the evening up until recently. My husband has found two rats in our yard during the daytime, my neighbor, Deidra, who I believe is gonna come up and speak as well, has found several rodents in her yard, and she also believes that they are burrowing in her stairs as well. And I just wanted to say, you know, I appreciate everything that the Council's doing, that the town is doing on our behalf, but just to have on record from some of the other residents that maybe you haven't heard from.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Deidre Couture, I also live on Sheffield Avenue in the Foothill section of North Providence, and I wanted to say thank you to the Council for all the work that you've done since we met last month with Rhode Island College and your kind representation on our issue, ongoing with the college and their expansion work. Unfortunately, as Ms. Brady was at our last meeting, the college did promise to help assist us with this rat problem, as they admitted that potentially this was the lion's share of their issue, and unfortunately, since that meeting, nothing has happened, and the problem has expanded at a rapid rate. I have some pictures I'm happy to forward you of the issues that have happened since then, it's been a few weeks. Rats have taken over our neighborhood to a degree that many homeowners in our community have had to buy new grills because the rats have now been living in our grills, defecating to the point that we are no longer able to use them. All of us in our neighborhood are very good about keeping it clean, if you've ever been on Sheffield Avenue, which I know some of you have been recently due to this issue with the college, you know that we are all tidy homeowners, all single-family homes for the most part, all keeping our trash quite clean, we all have small children, we're all awfully concerned about the fact that these are out during the day, they are large rats, we all have pets, all of us are doing our best to keep this issue at bay because we are frightened for the sake of our children. Most of us are not able to enjoy the outside any longer because they are all over and not afraid of any of us. I actually called A and D Pest Control prior to coming out today, they mentioned that they had received a call from North Providence regarding this issue and what they could potentially do, and they'll be out to my house tomorrow. I'm only asking because I was expecting some, something to be done on behalf of the college, and unfortunately, they didn't do their due diligence with regards to environmental impact as to what was going to happen, and unfortunately, the worst thing did. So I appreciate your recommendation about sending a letter to the college because I am concerned about what will happen as they continue to expand, because as neighbors around us have shared, that the pest control companies that have been out said that they could come out every week and pour more poison down, but until they stopped doing work at the college, this would not stop. So, I'm only asking that you do as much as you can, I know it's a big beast to deal with, but, you know, we're all having this issue, and it's expanding so far up the street that it's hitting Only Avenue, there've been dead rats squished in the middle of Only Avenue, which is at least two and a half to three blocks away from the end of the street where the college is, and I fear that with the cooler weather coming, that some of us are gonna have issues that we're not able to manage. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Name's John Pollock.
Joseph Ritchie. I reside at forty-three Charlotte Street.
Forty-nine Charlotte Street. We, just go on with the rodent issue, we have, within the past two months, I myself have had four rats, two dead and two on each side of the house, running around visibly. We had Mr. Amerigio a couple weeks ago to show him what was going on, and he was with us when we watched two, one on one side, one on the other. His neighbor has a backyard that is supposedly owned by National Grid, that's absolute pigsty. You have to see the trash that's over there, it's been there forever, he's got a boat that's been in the yard for how many years? Just sitting there.
Since he moved in the property.
We have condos that are on Hurdis Street, their dumpster is at the corner between their building and we're across the street from his house. There's garbage there on the ground for weeks at a time. Right now, you drive by there, you're gonna see a full apartment just sitting there next to the dumpster. It's, we've called a complaint, we've called the mayor's office, nobody makes calls back.
This is what it looks like.
Councilman DeStefanis has a question for you.
Concerning the property that National Grid owns, I've sent a letter to them, and I know that Mr. Foster has called them repeatedly. There's four or five properties that are but the multiple National Grid lands in that area. They are aware of the people who are invading their property, they are aware of the fact that they need to clean up some of that property.
But, my problem is with National Grid, they own the property, and they give me excuses. Last year, this has been going on since Mr. Michael "Eleven" Roosevelt bought this property, and this has been going years and years, it's been going on, with the dog barking all day, nobody does nothing about it. Now we got a rat problem by Mr. Lombardi who bought my house just before the election, and he see the problem where he's throwing all garbage, parking vehicles, he had many vehicles, I got pictures back when he first moved in, he had seven or eight cars, trucks, boats, he was collecting rent as far as I think he was on the property that he didn't even own, letting people store property, like their vehicles there. But now we got a rat problem, a rodent problem that's getting real bad. I, when Kenny was there, that, just like John said, that night we were on my property and looking around, at Uncue, two rats come out of their burrow. You know, and I've been trying to deal with it, but the National Grid is just, I don't understand why, it's their property, and they told me they couldn't do nothing because the guy was late on his mortgage, and they were trying to foreclose on him, but he's still there, and nothing's been done, and nothing's been cleaned up.
And if I could ask one question, the condos that are on Hurdis, their garages are between the condos and our homes, the National Grid property where the old police little substation is, that's a pooping ground for the condos?
Oh yeah.
And me and my wife ourselves have had words with a couple of tenants who have the galls to walk down Charlotte and let their dogs poop on my yard. I've gone out there, I've let my dog out there, and I tell him, "You come back, I'm letting my dog go." This, you're not gonna be pooping on my property. And if you could somehow send a letter to every apartment in that condo and let them know, if your dogs are gonna use that, pick it up, don't leave it there.
But National Grid really has no respect for the neighborhood. As far as that, where we're talking about that, where they used to have the substation, now all, they put barricades, it looks like a war zone over there, depreciating my property, and they don't keep the dogs out, they should have a fence all around their property where nobody could go in there. As far as, every morning I see ten or twelve dogs in there, they let them do their business and they leave.
And they leave.
And they come with cars, and they drop them off, and let the dog go in there.
I can't agree with you more, because multiple property that they own, I get calls all the time from, you know, "It's not cut," there's people parking vehicles on them, there's people using the property, I hundred percent agree, they should all be fenced in, all the town should, they should, we should work out a deal and take the property from them.
But I was taking care of a lot on Charlotte Street for years, and then after when Anthony, Michael moved in, the owner of that Eleven Roosevelt, he's actually a really disaster, it's a disaster on that property, and nothing's been done, National Grid owns most of the land there, he only owns a little land on the side of his house there, but National Grid, I don't understand why they don't take care of their property. I had them clean up on the side lot, though, they came and cleaned that after I'd been bitching and bitching about it, you know, about the mess, it's like, and I take care of my property. My property looks like a park, John can tell you, it's like a park, I take care of my property. And I say now rodents, I knew there was gonna be a rodent problem over there, when I called National Grid, now the National Grid never even calls me, they don't call me back or nothing no more.
Oh, Mr. President, while we're on that, can I make a motion to send a letter to National Grid, asking them to come to a community meeting?
Come right there.
I know, but then, I'd like to invite all the residents in that area to come to the meeting.
Did we, we sent them the letter last month, and they have not responded?
They have not responded, no.
They come and cut the grass when, maybe, well, that's when they, the branches are put, about two weeks ago, they come and cleaned up the lot that I took care for years for them. And then, when the dogs start going in there from Mr., the guy Eleven Roosevelt, I forget his last name, but he was letting dogs go in there from his house, he owns a four-unit or six-unit apartment, I was there on Roosevelt, and all the dogs go in that lot, and they were, and I said, "I forget it, I'm not taking care of it no more." Then they finally came, me bitching, the only reason why I got results was from Kenny Amerigio, I'm gonna tell you something.
Councilman DeStefanis has made a suggestion to call National Grid in for next month's council meeting to explain what's going on with this lot, because we sent a letter last month, apparently there's been no response. So do you wanna put that in the form of a motion, Councilman?
Yes, so, motion to send a letter to National Grid, asking them to come to the October meeting to address multiple properties that they own off of the Charles Street area.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman DeStefanis, seconded by Councilwoman Brady, all those, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Guys have it. Mayor, did you wanna speak?
Mr. Chairman, I couldn't agree more with these two gentlemen. Two beautiful pieces of property, and they maintain them. We're in negotiation, we're in negotiations with National Grid at this point in time. The fellow at Eleven Roosevelt, to the best of my knowledge, we have him in court right now. The problem we have is he owns a three-decker, National Grid owns the property next door to him. He's utilizing their property. We've got him at bay at this point in time, because National Grid really isn't doing much about it. We're also in negotiation with National Grid to try to take over some of those properties, especially the one where the storefront was. So, yeah, yeah. So, we're doing whatever we can, but I can tell you this, I've witnessed it, we've been by there, my idea, I told the building inspector's office, just tow the boat, the cars, it's still a boat there, right? Yeah, towed him, just towed him, and they're saying to me, "You just can't do that." I said, "How much are we gonna put up with here? Tow everything, clean it out, and the fellow on third, not third floor, the three-decker there, I think it's eleven, I think there's two addresses there by the way, you know, well then, maybe we'll get his attention." But, I'm gonna double-check this tomorrow, but I'm almost positive that we have that gentleman in municipal court to clean up the property. I mean, if you wanna see a nice piece of property, you gotta go to their yard, you wanna see a dump, you go over the fence, and it's not fair, I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, and many of you, but also...
Thank you. Thank you for coming out. Chief Foster wants to speak.
Mr. President, I just wanna make one thing clear, I just heard something. I believe when we met with this young lady here, I believe you were there, Steve?
Yes.
I believe you were there, Alice? I never said that, the only place in town that doesn't have rats is Lee's Farm.
No, you never did.
But, when you two people were there?
I didn't hear that.
I never ever said that. I don't know where that came from, I wanted the record to show, I never said that, there's many towns, many areas in this town that have rats, but there's more areas that don't have any rodents. Rodents come from people who are slobs, unfortunately, they go where there's a food source, and I just was surprised to say, sit there and...
You heard me say that, the only...
That is not, that is totally untrue, and I asked you to comment on that right now, and Alice, I asked you to comment on that, did I say that?
I was a few minutes late to the meeting, I don't recall.
You don't recall, how about you?
I did not hear that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, we have the motions in order to send to the Ordinance Committee, we're gonna send a letter to National Grid, and hopefully this helps. I also received a communication from Councilwoman Ryan from Providence, that she is in talks with Rick, they're gonna share the abatement program with her, which I would hope she'd share with myself, Councilman DiLorenzo and Councilwoman Brady. As soon as I can get that, I'll forward it over to you guys and let you know what's going on, it's 'cause we're at a loss like you are, you know, same, we think they're gonna do stuff, and then, yeah. We'll be in touch, thank you. Okay, item number twenty, Town Council refurbishing project, Councilwoman Brady requests discussion and possible vote with regard to the status of the Town Council Chambers refurbishing project, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been in touch with our Director of Public Buildings, Mr. Feroli, who's been working very, very hard on this project, we discussed a timeline, and Mr. Feroli believes that the best start date for the project will be October seventeenth and completion date January first. As the chamber will be closed during this period, I'd like to request that we send a letter to the groups who use the chamber, informing them of this change and referring them to the Director of Public Buildings so that he can schedule alternative meeting space for those groups while the chamber is being refurbished.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Juicy, any questions? Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm proud to tell you that we did have a very, very productive meeting last week, and we're going to do most of this work in-house. We should be able to save quite a few dollars, and we should be able to get more done. I think everyone that left that meeting was very, very satisfied with what went on, am I correct? Alice, am I correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, I think that at this point in time, as long as those individuals are notified, or the bodies are notified, where there may be a little interruption of the use of this room, I think we'll be okay. We're gonna do it as quickly as possible, and, you know, hopefully everyone will be satisfied and happy with the outcome, I think it should be very, very nice. But I wanna commit that... But I want to commit that Mr. Feroli, who's in charge of our, you know, buildings, will do whatever he can to satisfy your wants, not your needs, your wants. So, and I think we could get it done.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We also now have to set a place for our next few meetings. Probably have to set up, we're gonna have to come up with a place.
I think that
Not for January. January will be older.
I think there was talk about utilizing the library at the high school where the school committee meets. And the other side of the coin is you just never know, you know, how much is gonna be on your agenda. I mean, if you've got a very, very late agenda, you may be able to get away with using the room downstairs. I mean, it might be a tough call. You just don't know what's gonna be on the agenda, so. But that that's
We'll figure it out. Item number twenty-one. Parks, playgrounds, and ball fields. Councilman Distefanos requests discussion and possible vote on creating a plan to rehab existing parks, playgrounds, and ball fields within the town of North Providence. Councilman.
Mr. President, I placed this on the agenda this evening for multiple reasons. One being our parks and playgrounds in this town serve a variety of our youth. Over a thousand youth use our parks and playgrounds for various activities from football, basketball, baseball, et cetera. And I found with all the leagues that there is a need for updating some of them. And I know that the administration has done a lot over the last couple of years renovating ball fields and playgrounds throughout the town. I know that we as a council put money in our budget to implement playground equipment in various districts, one being in District Two off Charles Street, so the neighborhood has a park and a playground. And I put this on the agenda, most importantly, to try to come up with a plan, to try to create a committee. So that way we could take the needs of every park and playground and kind of prioritize them to figure out where we should go next. And I also noticed when I put this on the agenda that DM has released grant money. Three million dollars with a twenty percent match for open space for recreational purposes. And I wanted to know if that's something that we're moving towards.
You want to ask them?
Yeah, I guess. I mean, they're in the audience. Mayor?
Mayor? Councilman has a question for you.
So DM released three million dollars of grant opportunities for recreational purposes.
We're applying.
We are. Oh, good. Cool.
We are. And we, and our position with them, a counselor, is very simple. We have the least amount of open space left per capita in the state of Rhode Island. So when you talk about, you know, granting some funds to different communities for open space or recreation, we keep telling them that we should be on top of the list. And we've been pretty successful, you know, with the the grants that have been given to us. So I can tell you this, I've been saying it right along, that I agree. We need to do whatever we can to, you know, purchase properties for recreation at this point. And we continue to do that. So I would love to say, don't worry about it. Bottom line is, it costs a few dollars. We are, you know, talking to two different people. We may be coming back asking you for a supplement and see where that goes. But we are, it's it's on the top of the list, you know, to provide more space for recreation, so. But we are applying for that money. We already talked to Lisa Randosia, who's been very, very successful getting us some monies.
Thank you. Councilman, did you want to put a motion to form the committee or?
I do. So motion is to form a committee to come up with a plan on prioritizing the rehab of our parks and playgrounds.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Distefanos, second by Councilwoman Brady. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number twenty-two. Temporary speed bumps. Councilman Distefanos requests discussion and possible vote on purchasing additional temporary speed bumps. Councilman.
Mr. President, before before we move on to twenty-two, I just, I gotta say this publicly. Mayor, I DPW, when it comes to caring for our ball fields and our, you know, recreational activities for our youth, I mean, that that crew is amazing. You know, Joey Ricotti is just doing an incredible job and I really can't thank him enough for everything he's done for every time I've called him. I mean, just the work he does with the manpower he has and the little time he has available, I mean, it's just, it's amazing.
I appreciate it. We did make that change approximately a year ago. Put Joe in charge, we had to make a change. We did identify that there was an issue. We also approved from, for some additional summer help this year. And it has worked out. You can see a difference, I mean, the trimming, I mean, what have you, so. I appreciate that and I'll make sure that he knows about it. Thank you very, very much.
So item number twenty-two, Mr. President, I placed this on the agenda, you know, and I'm glad that our new chief of police is present this evening. Again, congratulations on the on the appointment. So I I've been, I've been doing this for three years, you know, constantly asking for speed bumps to be placed in. Not that I want them, but they are a deterrent to speeding. We all get the calls daily on it. And the problem that we ran into this summer is you'd call up and you'd ask for a speed bump to be installed, a temporary one, and there wouldn't be any available because this, I believe we owned sixteen. The sixteen of them were out. And to call someone and say, hey, you got a speed bump in your area, you done with it? You know, can I borrow it from my area? And I was just, I put this on the agenda with the thought process of could we buy more?
So the issue we have with the temporary speed bumps is the cost. They're approximately twenty-eight hundred dollars per bump. We need to go out, drill the road, put the stakes or what the screws in the road. We have to remove them for the winter. I think we're down to about sixteen. We could change the procedure, issue so many per district. Myself, I would assess where you want a speed bump. And I think it would cost, it would cost a lot less and maybe be more safe to put a permanent bump in than you may have another sixteen or eighteen or twenty permanent bumps around town. I think it's, it's, you know, it's it's an issue of, okay, do we, instead of put a speed bump, ask the police to spend a little more time there? Can the police, you know, be at every request all day? They can't. Again, I don't know that I would be requesting, you know, to spend twenty-eight thousand dollars for ten additional speed bumps that in the meantime costs money, costs time to put in. I just don't know. Maybe next year, because the bumps in another month are coming out. Maybe next year, do we say, okay, we have sixteen of them? You know, do we put the, you know, five in each district? Tell us where the worst problem is and handle it that way. Take more control of the request of the, for the bump. But I don't know, Ray. I don't know that we should be spending twenty-eight hundred dollars for, per additional, you know, speed bump. I know we're going down, I want to say within the next week or so, and put that speed bump on Lojai. That's gonna be taken care of. We just had a couple of issues going on that we got a little, you know, behind, especially with the summer, but that's going in. But again, you know, whatever we have to do to satisfy the request, we will do that. You know, there was an issue just last week, I think it was in Main Street, Leah? No?
I'm sorry.
By Street, by. That, you know, we checked out the bumps and said, where where can we remove a bump that maybe shouldn't even be where it is? So I asked Mike, the assistant director, to take a look at that, to put that, you know, to relocate a a speed bump, so.
So, Mayor, here's my issue with this whole thing. Do I wanna, do I wanna buy more speed bumps? No, I don't think anybody does. But when I came on this council three years ago and I would speak with the former chief and I would get, well, if you put it in, I can't guarantee you that we're gonna have a cop there. You know, an officer goes in, you know, a D run, to request a D run. That, that's what it's called, a D run. The officer can't necessarily be there at all times. So I started to look at how many tickets we wrote. Because we are a cut through town and our ticket volume was low. So they implemented N-Pair and our ticket volume went up. And the calls that at least I was receiving from constituents complaining about speeding on their streets where their kids playing, dropped. The calls have now started to increase again. And prior to the chief coming on, I had a conversation with the former chief and said, hey, why are these calls increasing the beginning of the summer? How are you doing with the N-Pair program? Well, we haven't dispatched as much because, you know, it's the overtime issue. Trying to get them to fill the overtime slots. So the N-Pair program and the amount of tickets being written dropped. The amount of calls for for speeding increased.
I think our income is pretty steady as far as the tickets. But that being said, the chief and I have chatted. I've been a proponent, and I think you know, I've been to
No, you've been a great help.
No, no, but just to explain to you, I attended a number of shift changes at the police station and tried to encourage our people to get into the neighborhoods. I don't want to drive up Middle Spring Avenue. I don't want to drive up Smith Street. And I don't want to drive down Wenntzka Tucker Avenue, Douglas Avenue, and see a police car or two police cars parked. Get into the neighborhood. Befriend that that child or kid that's playing basketball. Hi, I'm Officer Distefanos, Night Distefanos, nice to meet you. That's my idea of it. The chief and I have chatted about this. And I can, I can't speak for the chief, but I think I can. I think you're gonna see more participation in the neighborhoods. I don't know. And by the way, we don't need an N-Pair program, okay, to encourage a police officer to get into a neighborhood. That's his job.
Well, I thought the N-Pair was they took monies down from the Fed to
Yeah, well, you do. You get extra money to bring additional people on to get in the neighborhood. Well, excuse me, that person that's working that eight-hour shift, he should be in the neighborhood.
Mayor, I gotta say, in the last two weeks, and I don't know if this is part of something you instituted, chief, but they've been up in my neighborhood and they gave out a lot of tickets up in my neighborhood. Now, I'm the converse of what Ray said. Now I'm getting a lot of tickets. What the hell is going on? You guys are ticketing your own people, right?
Just one second, chief. That's usually
I know it. I know it, so.
They're exempt. They're exempt.
So honorable members of the council, I I can tell you that upon taking command of the department, I also went to many of the roll calls and imparted upon the police officers to spend more time in the neighborhoods. I've had, I've received a couple of calls from the neighborhoods, people, folks saying, your police officers are doing a great job, they're visible in the neighborhood. So I think that message has gotten out there. I do know that I have personally asked for the N-Pair overtime using the grant money. And just as recently as Friday, I had an overtime shift out there collecting those tickets. No one wants a speed bump. I mean,
No.
No one wants, and it's, you know, the people beg for it, they want it, they get it, and then a few months later, they don't want it anymore. It's because, so I'd ask you to just give me some time. The message is being delivered. I see our officers responding to that. If there's a problem area, pick up the phone, call me, I will address it. Our officers are eager to be out there and to work and that's what we're here for. So if I can avoid putting the speed bumps in and putting a little more enforcement, I'm happy to do it.
Thank you.
Members of the council, as I stated, Councilman Distefanos, that speed bumper we going in with all week, week. But I just want to remind you of one thing. Might have been four or five years ago. We had a meeting in the middle of Wentz Scott Lane. Every resident was at this meeting in the middle of the street. Everyone begging for a speed bump. I don't live there. Our job is to satisfy the constituents. We put a speed bump. The same person that led the band for the speed bump is the same person that put a sign on her lawn two months later, call Mayor Lombardi to remove the speed bump. I didn't put the bump there, you asked for it.
Every time he
So, yeah, really, I mean, it's it's funny, but it's not funny. So I'm just hoping, by the way, Ray, because I'm gonna tell them to call you for Lojai Boulevard.
And by the way, on that story, Mayor, Mayor, on that story, the woman that requested the speed bump moved out of the neighborhood.
She did, you're correct. You're absolutely right. She was so mad that the speed bump went in that she was responsible for she moved. Oh, man.
Hey, I'll verify that story because we hit every single house on Wentz Scott Lane that day. And everybody wanted to invite us in for coffee and cake and everything else until we put two speed bumps there. And then no one wanted to talk to us anymore. But let me just make a request. And Manny, our proof positive here. When someone called you to put in a speed bump, make sure more than one person wants that speed bump in the street. We had one gentleman put one in. We had one put in for a gentleman on in Manny's area. While they were putting it in, I was getting calls to take it out. So we get into a a pretty serious situation that when you got half of the people who want a speed bump, half don't want it. I'm not a high IT guy and internet guy. Look up speed bumps on the internet. See how many lawsuits you have because of them. Rescues have to almost stop when they're going over speed bumps if they have a patient in the car, in the vehicle. I suggest you're very certain, the temporary speed bumps are not too bad, but when you start putting the permanent speed bumps in, rescue squad can't hit it at the normal amount of speed, they have to slow down. So there's two sides to the speed bumps. I think when we came in, Mr. Mayor, we had about fifty speed bumps, right? And and the, every year we lose three because they get damaged, they plow them up if it snows too quick. So, and you know the story on our famous street, right? So there's both sides to the speed bumps, you know? If we got them and they want them, you put them in, no one complains, that's fine. But sometimes they cause problems.
I don't want to belabor the point, but quite frankly, the residents of the town and the council people are probably our best resource. Like I said, if there's an area that needs to be targeted, pick up the phone and I'll have our officers respond and do some enforcement, selective enforcement in that area. Be happy to do it.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Okay, item number twenty-three. Board appointments. Town council discussion and possible vote with regard to letter received from William Woodward of the Historic District Commission and appointments to the following boards. A, Board of canvases. Okay, I'm gonna read this letter into the record. Dear President Odiello, as you know, elections are in a quorum. A quorum of board members must be of board members must be present for many election-related activities. Rhode Island General Laws, Section 17-8-1, provides that the council may appoint an alternate board member to serve in the absence of any board member. Therefore, we are in need of an alternate Democratic board member. I am hereby requesting that the council appoint an alternate Democrat board member. If I can be of any further assistance in this matter, please feel free to contact me. Very truly yours, Lawrence K. Flynn, Director. Do we have anyone that we'd like to place on? Okay, I want, a motion to... Continue this?
Continue to the next meeting.
Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Brady. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. B, Zoning Board. Reappointment?
I'll nominate Brendan Snodgrass.
Councilman DiLorenzo's made a motion to nominate Brendan Snodgrass.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Brady. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Also, I'd like to read...
District Commission, we got a reappointment.
Okay, I'm gonna read Mr. Woodward's letter into the record. Town Council, North Providence. Honorable Town Council, this is gonna be tough.
I wish to remain.
I wish to remain on the Historic District Commission and promise to attend meetings when I am in the country. Very truly yours. Mackenzie Woodward.
William.
William Mackenzie Woodward. 157 Only Avenue. Okay. I'm gonna make a motion to send a copy of Mr. Woodward's letter to the chairwoman of the Historic District Commission, and ask her to let us know if Mr. Woodward attends meetings going forward.
Still move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy, seconded by Councilman Faola. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. 24, Ordinance Committee Report. Town Council Discussion and Possible Vote With Regard To The Ordinance Committee Report And Approval, Denial, Or Referral Of The Items Within Said Report To Be Presented By Councilman Juicy.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Juicy, is there a second?
Yep.
Seconded by Councilman Brady. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 25, Introduction Of Ordinance 17-009. An ordinance to provide veterans-only parking at the town hall and town parks. Do I have a motion to introduce?
Still move.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Brady, seconded by Councilman Faola. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 26, Introduction Of Ordinance 17-010. An ordinance establishing Section 13-16 within Chapter 13 of Article 13 of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of North Providence entitled Fire Prevention and Miscellaneous Provisions. Do I have a motion to introduce?
Still move.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Brady, seconded by Councilman DiLorenzo. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 27, Introduction Of Ordinance 17-0011. An ordinance amending Chapter 31, Article 5, Section 31-24 of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of North Providence entitled Abandonment Of Highways, Driveways Procedure. Do I have a motion to introduce?
Still move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Brady, seconded by Councilman Juicy. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 28, Resolution 17-003. Discussion And Vote On Resolution 17-003 Of The Town Of North Providence To Request The General Assembly Take The Necessary Steps To Amend Article 20, Chapter 1, Section 20-1-2 And Section, and 20-1-3 As Well As Chapter 2, Section 20-2-1 Of The Town Of North Providence Town Charter Concerning The North Providence Purchase. Hey, do I have a motion to continue Resolution 17-003?
Still move. Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy, seconded by Councilman Brady. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 29, Claims Submitted. Town Council Discussion And Possible Vote With Regard To The Claims Received From Following Four Claims. Donald Bianco, 53 Sherwood Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island. Frank Capisci, 116 Hawkins Boulevard, North Providence, Rhode Island. Patty McBride, Peter McBride, 29 Cityview Circle, North Providence, Rhode Island. Charles Lennon, by attorney George Capello, 942 Park Avenue, Cranston, Rhode Island. Do I have a motion to send these to the Claims Committee?
Still move. Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Distefanis, seconded by Councilman Brady. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Claims, item number 30, Claims Committee Report. Town Council Discussion And Possible Vote With Regard To The Claims Committee Report And Approval, Denial, Or Referral Of Claims Within Said Report To Be Presented By Councilman Faola. Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Claims Committee met earlier this evening. The following claim, this is the resolution for the following claims. First claim, Mr. Bianco was approved in the amount of $831.91. This was damage to his property, a fence. The second was Mr. Capisci, this was damage to a sprinkler head. This was approved in the amount of $85. Mr. Peter McBride, this claim was continued to next month's meeting. And the last claim, Mr. Lennon, this, this was forwarded to the town's carrier for bodily injury.
Thank you, Councilman. Do I have a motion to accept the report?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy, seconded by Councilman Brady. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 31, Tax Addenda. Town Council Discussion And Action, Possible Vote For The Approval Of The List Of Tax Addendas Received From The Tax Assessor In The Amount Of $36,234.48 For Real Estate. Do I have a motion to grant?
Still move. Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy, seconded by Councilman Brady. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 32, Tax Abatements Under $1,000. Town Council Discussion And Action, Impossible Vote For The Approval Of The List Of Tax Abatements Under $1,000 Received From The Tax Assessor In The Amount Of $4,005.16 For Real Estate, $953,821.10 For Motor Vehicles, And $767.19 For Tangible. Okay, okay, yep. Do I have a motion to abate?
Still move.
Motion's been made by Councilman Brady, seconded by Councilman Juicy. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Still move. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?